You know what I forgot to do? At the top of the show, I forgot to congratulate you for winning a date with Wedge Live because that was the premise of this, the, this contest I was running, which isn't really a contest because everyone wins. Okay, so congratulations for winning a date with me on my podcast here.
Enjoying it so much already. We're rolling. We are rolling. This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing. I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today. We're in the Wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now. And a lot of people left that room. I, I literally got people with his shirts on telling me that, um, you know, I, I promised him I would vote for him and I did, but, um, I do realize that he lied about a few things up on the stage.
Oh, oh, well, let's, uh, let me introduce the show and then we can get, we can get into what Ray, Michael Rainville is lying about. I want, um, this is the Wedge Live podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards, and my guest is Ward three candidate for Minneapolis City Council, Marcus Mills. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, now tell me what, tell me what Michael Rainville lied about.
Wow, we're starting with this. All right, no problem. So, I mean, there were several things about, I mean, Conrad brought a few of these points up. Some of the elements of housing, Rainville has this, uh, uh, position that housing is the main, one of the main things that he's concentrating on. And yet, a number of points of housing, um, that came before him, uh, on the, uh, well, while he was on the, while he's on the council, um, have been, uh, points that he has voted against.
Right.
Um, including the kinds of, uh, buildings that, um, helped folks like Conrad, um, recovering from, uh, uh, various things that, um, are, can be quite debilitating. The problem is, um, he, uh, Rainville was using, uh, excuses like, oh, there's higher crime and things like, which are not correlated at all.
About housing, you mean?
About those kinds of housing. And that, that's just one of the examples, um, of the kinds of things that he, uh, pushed, uh, pushed against that he now claims is, you know, one of the highlights of his, uh, positioning. And that's just a few things. And I mean, even his supporters recognized, um, that and were telling me that, you know, I, I know, I recognize that he lied about a few things on that, uh, on the stage there, uh, after the convention. So, if, if people are voting for you out of their sense of honor because they promised you, um, that they'd vote for you, and yet they hear you bald faced lying at them and know it, that's not something that will sustain for very long.
Right. I, I remember the, the Hennepin County, uh, they, they're converting like a hotel, I think, or a motel to like permanently affordable housing funded by the county. And people, he's on the planning commission, Rainville is, and people brought their complaints about crime and he was reinforcing it. He was encouraging them.
Exactly. I think, I think that's literally the thing we're talking about, but go ahead.
Yeah. So I think one way he can weasel out of that is that he did, so he delayed that project and he spoke very negatively about the crime impacts. But in the end, after delaying it, he did vote for it. So he can kind of have it both ways that he kind of like pandered to the crime concerns, but also voted for it. So.
He tried to.
There, there is my weak defense of Michael Rainville, somebody I don't, I don't necessarily want to defend.
And hey, uh, here's the thing. M- Michael Rainville is a perfectly reasonable human being.
Oh, I don't know about that.
I don't think he's a leader and therefore I think that's the, I think that's the issue. We need a leader in that place. And I, I think a progressive leader would be better, but that's just my opinion. So that's one of the reasons why I'm running.
So aside from that, the housing stuff with Michael Rainville, what is the other, what's the rest of the case against Michael Rainville?
So, I mean, it's not even just a case against Michael Rainville. Part of it is a case for me.
Oh, I know.
But that's a story. Um, so, I mean, a number, a number of elements that he, uh, has on his website are points that are just things that happened during the, I mean, these are the things that his website claims are the best things about him. Um, you know, uh, bringing folks back to the office, um, uh, increasing, uh, what was it? Increasing events in the, in downtown, um, uh, 15,000 tons of, uh, emissions less since 2019. Those are all aspects of the pandemic or the end of the pandemic. And he's touting them as accomplishments that he achieved. And if that's the best you got, then it sounds like what he's been doing is just kind of sitting there, letting things happen and then telling you, uh, what has happened as if he did it. And that's not the kind of person that should be representing Ward three. And definitely not the kind of person that should be leading Minneapolis. We have a, a long history of capacity for, uh, progressive movement and the capability to really achieve and be a leader in the, in the country. And I've got some plans to kind of accomplish that kind of thing. Um, kinds of things that will make us shine. Go ahead.
Let me ask you about you and your plans, sort of. Uh, so to give me a sense of, of you, Marcus Mills, what, what do you think is wrong with the city right now? Like, so this can be like one main thing, like tell me what the problem is? And then, uh, tell, tell me how you're gonna fix it. So a little bit of specificity here. We can, we can do the laundry list later, but like, I mean, have anything in mind that you're really passionate about that you think, well, this is a big problem and here's my specific idea for how we can do better? Like what motivates you?
Let me, let me give a, a, a general and then a very specific. And the general is that we have unfortunately a kind of conservative majority on the city council. And they've been blocking actual progress for a very long time. And, and that's not even when we are dealing with it from the state preambitions. Um, and so I believe that a, a unified progressive, uh, majority on the council, um, is the best way to achieve for us. Now, you want to get specific on topics happily. Um, I think that some of the, some of the issues on, um, community safety and some of the issues on energy and environment, are some of the bigger problems that we're, uh, dealing with. I think a lot of the solutions can come from energy and environment, even into areas like housing. And I'll get into that obviously, um, much like I did on stage, but, um, I also believe that, and when it comes to community safety, all of the solutions that people put forward are entirely contingent on whether or not we can actually keep the, uh, uh, our, our safety personnel at the bargaining table because the police with their current union contract can simply walk away and nothing happens. They, they did it in 2019. We got them, uh, we got them a, uh, another contract in 2022. And if I went from 2019 to 2022 without a contract, it would be doom for me or, or any ordinary person. But the police get to keep the terms of their old contract. So we need leverage in order to achieve any of the reforms or any of the kinds of, uh, solutions that I think would actually do us real good. And that, we don't have it. I mean, to even get close, we need that leverage and we don't have it.
So on your website, I, I noticed the, the part about the police union contract and, uh, you say.
The 70, 30, yeah, there's a lot of things.
You say there is no leverage to create the kind of change we need and certainly not to create the kind of change suggested by others without regaining that leverage. I know how to, I know how to do so where most others do not. Uh, so you, you know how to regain the leverage over the police union? How?
So we actually need to change the charter. Um, the situation that people assumed was that the charter change would actually drop, would actually, uh, drop the, uh, existing organized police, uh, circumstance and entirely eliminate, um, what, what people were thinking of as, uh, what protects them. And first of all, one of the things that we need more than anything else is to be able to show people that there are other forms of service that, uh, accomplish there. We already have. We have our, um, behavioral, uh, crisis response teams, uh, helping out with mental health and they are doing a wonderful job. We need to scale that up. Um, and on top of that, we also have our violence interveners, um, the folks you see in the, uh, brown hoodies with the mini Apple US, US logo at the, uh, uh, on the back, they're doing, I mean, they're doing surprisingly impressive work. Trying to deescalate situations and, uh, all throughout the city. And they're doing a massive job of it and we need to, uh, we can't ask for terribly much more, but we can, I mean, we can't ask for terribly much better, but we can ask for more. And I think that's the best. We, we can increase of those kinds of things. And that in and of itself begins to show, um, both the community and the police that there are alternatives. And then you need to be able to, you need to be able to change the charter so that, um, the police recognize that we can actually, um, change their, uh, we can actually walk away from the table and leave them without the, uh, existing circumstances so that we can actually change their contracts. We can actually get leverage at the table. If we don't, we never will be able to.
So when you say change the charter, what, what part of the charter would we need to change?
There is a current requirement that, um, per, I, I forget the number.
Is it the police, police staffing minimum, you mean?
Yes, exactly.
So the thing that we tried to change in the charter that got twisted into you want to eliminate all police forever.
Well, that's the thing.
So we have to go back and do that again.
Well, that was not the, that was not the purpose of that charter change.
Right, but it got, it was very easily twisted into that and, uh, crashed and burned.
The thing that, the thing that got, the thing that got everybody was, everybody said that there wasn't a plan. And that's the problem. I mean, I can tell you very specifically that 17 days after the murder of George Floyd, um, Community Power, the organization, uh, I'm working for, um, with my company, um, actually asked me to put forth a statement that meant, that would mean something, uh, you know, coming from an energy and environment group. And in that 17-page response, um, is a plan. Um, it was a, it was a very simple and rudimentary plan, but it overlaps with most of the plans that got made during that period of time. There were dozens of plans. And they overlapped on about eight or nine very specific points that were, uh, very useful and, uh, very effective. And the point is, the main argument against that movement at the time was, oh, there's no plan. What I find amazing about that is the two other things that did, that were on the ballot and did get put forward were the strong mayor amendment and, um, and, uh, rent control.
Right.
Both of which didn't have a plan at the time.
Right.
So they passed the two things that didn't have plans and pa, and, uh, voted against the thing that did.
Right.
So.
The thing about the public safety amendment, uh, it was a permission structure is what it was. Just like the rent control thing. It was like, you, you are now allowed to do this. You don't have to do it.
Exactly.
You are allowed to do it. And yeah, the whole, there's no plan thing was irritating.
Yes, it was very much so. And very well-funded irritating, to be honest.
Yeah.
Just being able to have that kind of option gives you leverage over the conversations with the police and gives everybody, uh, uh, a pivot point if the choice is, if the police decide that they're just preferring the status quo, which in 2019, we didn't have a pivot point and we need one at the very least.
So you talked about BCR and, uh, violence interrupters. So the premise of this question is that these are things that everyone supports now. But like, when I think of Ward three and Michael Rainville, he has explicitly said that he, he wants to defund those programs. So, but still I'll stick with my premise that these are things that basically there's consensus on and everyone supports. And so coming from that point, like what, what are the public safety stakes in this election? Obviously the, there, there is a clear contrast in Ward three, but like speaking Ward three and citywide, what are the public safety stakes? Like what do we get from a more progressive city council? Than a, than a, the current more moderate or conservative city council?
So what we get from that is more options and more capability. We get ideas, real concepts that can move forward. The behavioral crisis response teams were something that was created out of a, a study that we did on the, uh, 911 system. There are a lot of concepts that could, uh, both take stresses off the police and decrease people's interactions, uh, with police. And that is a way to increase safety. The police are always going to be trying to ensure, um, what's the word? Um, shall we say, stability. They were, they're going to be trying to ensure, uh, control and order. The problem is that that's not always what's called for. Um, when you, when you have a, a property crime or when you're dealing with, um, a, a traffic, a minor traffic accident, you don't need armed personnel there to take a statement for an insurance company. What you, what, what could do just as well as a, a simple staffer, um, who's well-trained in what, uh, that information is. On top of that, if we actually had our communities, um, structured in a slightly, uh, better way, such that we weren't, um, excluding various classes of people from various areas. If we had all different types of people in all of the areas of the city, we would have folks who were working at all different times on the street. This is a concept that Jacob used to talk about when he was talking about inclusive, uh, inclusionary zoning and inclusive housing practices. If you have, um, all, if you have eyes on the street at all times of day and night, because people are, different people are working, different people are operating in the same place, um, you end up with greater security because, uh, you know, the criminal element has a tendency to not want eyes on it. And so when you have eyes on the street at all hours, it really works. It actually helps. And you start, uh, uh, you start, uh, disseminating the, uh, social capital amongst all different kinds of people instead of locking it into, um, only the areas where the most wealthy reside. If, if you notice gated communities are based around the idea that all of the same kind of people with all of the resources are all located in the same place. And because they have no way to protect themselves, so they believe, they gate off the community to ensure that it's protected by others. The way to get out of that kind of mentality is to have all different kinds of people in all, in all different kinds of places. Such that the kinds of social capital, um, that they would be hoarding in a gated community is regularly free, free flowing through everyone. And under those circumstances, you've decreased the levels of despair that increase crime rates in normal circumstances. And on top of it, you've got eyes on the street to decrease, um, the opportunity uh, for crime under those circumstances as well. And that's for everyone instead of just the wealthiest.
You know what I, you know what I forgot to do? At the top of the show, I forgot to congratulate you for winning a date with Wedge Live because that was the premise of this, the, this contest I was running, which isn't really a contest because everyone wins. Uh, okay. So congratulations for winning a date with me on my podcast here.
Enjoying it so much already.
Okay. Uh, so what's going on in Ward three? What are people concerned about? I'm sure you talked to a bunch of people at the, the convention. Maybe you got a, maybe you have a, you probably have a better sense of what people's concerns are as a candidate than, uh, your average person. What's the crime situation in Ward three? Is that what people want to talk about? Is it, are good things happening? What is happening across the river?
So generally, the, the main elements, yes, people are always concerned with crime in Ward three. Not because there's a lot of crime, but because it's surprising whenever there is. Ward three is a good piece of downtown and much of northeast. Um, all of northeast that isn't Ward one. Um, we lost a couple of neighborhoods to, uh, Ward one and I'm a little sad about it, but, um, love me some baton, no. Um, but like, the, the territories that are here, um, we deal with, uh, some degrees of crime, uh, property crime especially, um, uh, some of the, uh, uh, more rowdy, uh, liquor, liquor-based establishments and some of the food places that are open late, um, attract, um, attention in the middle of the night after bar closed and that kind of thing. Um, we have lots of students that live nearby and trying to make sure that there are, um, make sure that there are, uh, lights, um, and security along the ways that they travel home and, uh, uh, head to their, uh, various events, um, especially at night, um, is always a consideration because we have a lot of different types of people and a lot of different concerns that they have for their own safety. Now that's, that's safety and we, we have done a lot of things in this area to improve those kinds of circumstances. Turn my computer back on. Sorry about that. Um, we have a lot of, uh, situations that, um, that are, are suitable to, uh, folks. We've increased the lighting in the area a great deal. Um, it simply helps a lot of folks as they're, um, heading home at night. Um, and we, uh, from time to time, when we've got businesses that are, um, operating at hours that attract, um, some unwanted attention, um, we simply, uh, hire, um, uh, uh, police presences for, uh, those moments and it has a tendency to decrease those elements. Now that's safety in the area and we take care of it pretty well in general. Um, our, uh, precinct two has been, uh, the second precinct, uh, uh, of the police, uh, circumstance has been, uh, reasonably responsive in terms of, uh, communication with neighborhoods. But, um, basically what we're, what we're dealing with in general in, uh, in this part of the city is a housing issue. I've been a part of the, uh, Marcy Homes neighborhood and the, I was chair of the Marcy Homes neighborhood, uh, land use and development committee for six years. I was, uh, dealing with a lot of luxury housing being built in the Marcy Homes area. And the, the issue with that is it's increasing rents and it's pricing people out of their homes. Um, a lot of the folks here are older folks and while they're trying to, um, maybe downsize into, uh, situations that are easier for their limited income to deal with, they're often trying to, uh, get into, uh, smaller housing, you know, more like, um, get out of their houses and into, um, kind of rental, uh, housing, um, in their later years. We, we call it, um, we call it, uh, living in place or aging in place. And the interesting thing is that what, what's happening is a lot of people are ending up, especially in the Marcy Homes area and, and surrounding, um, the university, uh, territories. You're ending up trying to move into housing that's almost as expensive, if not more expensive than the mortgages you were paying. Because, uh, 3,000 units of luxury housing were built in the Marcy Homes area and right around the, uh, university in the past decade. And it's, it's really damaging the capacities here. In fact, I'm living in a, I'm living in a building that was built in the seventies and the, you know, so it, 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 the building is the same building that was, uh, built then. And yet, you know, it's kind of the increases in, uh, pricing have gone from around 700 when I moved in 21 years ago to a thousand for the same kind of housing. And that's just due to the luxury that's coming in. Sorry, go ahead.
I was reading, uh, the, must've been the development section of your website. So I read that part about how, uh, they build all, built all these units and prices went up. And I'm wondering, and so 700 to a thousand in 21 years? Is that, is that a lot, uh, considering the time period and like inflation and stuff? Is that like a lot of money?
For the same housing. The, the difference is if you're, if you're coming into new housing, we understand that it would be, you know, it has new amenities. It'd be kind of different. Um, it'd be built with, uh, kind of better structure. We've learned a few things in the past 50 years. You would expect that, uh, some of that housing might be a little more expensive, but the same housing is increasing a great deal over time.
Just with like the cost of living adjustments up with inflation and stuff, wouldn't it just have gone up by that much? I'm, so what I'm saying is I'm terrible at inflation math. So I'm like, I'm assuming 20, so when I moved to Minneapolis, here's my personal story. 10 years, about 10 years ago, so half the time, uh, that you've been in your place, I, rents were about 700-ish, 750 at that time. And I feel like it's gone up almost $300 in that timeframe.
Let me bring a couple of thoughts into that conversation, which is what, what would increase, uh, rents like that? What increases these prices usually is an increase in demand. Um, we do have, we've weathered a lot of the storms, the housing crisis back in the, uh, late 2000s and the, um, and the pandemic recently, much better than several other places in the country. And it's increasing the demand, uh, here in, uh, Minneapolis. And I mean, we see it in North Loop. We see it here in Marcy Homes. There's a great deal of demand, uh, for the, for the housing in these areas. And the problem is that if all of the, all of the actual housing that's being built is luxury, but the demand is middle class, then that means that the, the actual housing isn't in, increasing where the demand is. So the prices are just rising in the middle. They're rising there. Um, and they're rising at the bottom as well. What we need is reasonable, reasonably priced housing, low-cost housing. That will decrease the pressure, um, coming in from a, a lot of the areas that people are, uh, trying to move into. Um, the difficulty is of course that if all that's being generated is luxury, it doesn't take the pressure off of the middle class or, uh, lower market housing. It takes the, it takes the pressure off of and creates more options for the wealthiest people. And Michael, Michael Rainville spent so much time on stage on Saturday saying, uh, today's luxury housing is tomorrow's market rate, regular housing. And it's like, that's not how it works generally. What happens is that existing housing is destroyed so we can put in the new luxury housing. Um, and then the luxury housing lasts for as long as it does and then is replaced by more luxury housing because that's where the most money for developers comes in. So what we need to be able to do, both with inclusionary zoning and with our housing directives is partner with both our NPHA. We need to get their budget under control, which, um, like I said, uh, energy and environment has a solution for that, inclusive financing, um, could actually, uh, eliminate the, uh, budget shortfall there. So get their budget back, uh, to the point where they're generating new housing, partner with some of our, uh, low-cost housing developers like, uh, PPL and Aon and start creating partnerships, um, with the existing development so that we can create higher and higher percentages of, um, housing in our, uh, neighborhoods that's affordable, even in, um, developments that would have been luxury housing, uh, to begin with.
Okay.
So those are some of the solutions.
To satisfy my own curiosity, this is not a gotcha, but I went to this inflation calculator, uh, Bureau of Labor Statistics. And I calculated the past 21 years, March, March 2002, $700. It has the same buying power as 1181, so $1,181 in March 2023. So.
Great. And you might find that cars have gone up about that same amount, but usually housing doesn't. Uh, just to give you my own personal, my own personal, uh, consideration, um, when I moved in, my apartment was $690 per month. In the past, in the 20 years before last year, my, uh, landlords only raised my rent about $70 total. So little increments over time, but only about $70. Um, last year because of the fear of the rent control, of the rent control, uh, charter, uh, shift, um, they raised my rent $100 just for that. And I've got pretty good landlords.
Did they tell you that?
Deal with, yes, very specifically.
That's, that sounds possibly self-serving, like sorry, I have to do this. The city made me do it by considering rent control.
Oh, those are almost their exact words. Those are almost their, almost their exact words. They know that I work with the city. Um, and in contact with them, uh, under many circumstances. And the idea that I might, uh, say something about it, um, was one of the reasons why they told me. And these are, these are actually good people. These are people I'm happy to work with over the past 20 years.
Kind of a shifty thing to do. I would have said, either you don't know what you're talking about or, uh, please get out of my face. That's very rude thing for you to have told me.
These are, these are, these are decent people. I, I can have reasonably good conversations.
Did you tell the, did you tell them this isn't even a policy? There is no policy yet being considered? So please, don't do this. You can do it later.
Here's the other thing. I could afford it. I thankfully, I am in a position where I could afford that jump, but, you know, yes, it was based on, it was based on a negative principle. Uh, it was based on something that was false. And I didn't have a great reason to, uh, fight my landlords specifically. We've been getting along for two decades.
Right.
It was worth a conversation, not a, not an argument. So that's why I let it go.
Before we move on to rent control, we'll talk about that a little. I want to ask a philosophical question about housing. You mentioned the thousands of units. And so I wonder if you think, is, is your part of the city, is Minneapolis better off for having built all the thousands of new housing units? Are we, would we be better off if we hadn't built them? Or have they been a net positive or a negative, do you think?
So in this area, we are serving a lot of, uh, students. And when you're dealing with, when you're dealing with students whose money it isn't, and it's, you know, it's their parents' money and they are reasonably wealthy, the question is less absolute. We definitely could be doing better. We definitely could be doing better. What we should have been doing is building low cost housing. We are not better off for the three thousand units of luxury housing that were built. Um even if it was pointed at students, but the 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 difficulty, of course, is that. Um when you're talking about college students whose parents are paying for their um parents are paying for their housing. It's it's less uh it's less of a direct one to one. Cause the students in and of themselves are poor. They have very little money. Um the parents, though, probably are in better circumstances uh try uh getting their kids through college. I do believe that it would still have been much, 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 much better if we'd been building um much. Uh more affordable housing instead. We would be taking off a lot of the pressures and it would serve students even better. They might actually be able to begin their own uh processes of uh of taking care of themselves, taking care of their rents.
So when the city approves a building, they don't say this is these are the rents you can charge. They say, well, you have the right under the zoning code to build this building and you can you set your own rents. That's not something the city regulates at this point. So I mean, there was there was no way for the city to have said these must be affordable buildings other than the inclusionary zoning uh policy. So I'm just trying to get at like, are are we better off like philosophically that those units were built? Or should we have like shut it down and not built them? Like, would we? A thought experience experiment, if we had not built them, would we be better off now?
I don't I don't think, well, will we be better off than nothing? I think we'd be better off than nothing. I don't think we are much better off. Here's the point. What we should have been doing is promoting lower cost housing. Which is what all of the politicians had been claiming at the time. They simply didn't actually do it. Um the 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 inclusionary zoning percentage is so low. Um that it it accomplishes very little and what they're trying to do is not scare off. Uh developers who want to build uh luxury while still um creating some housing and they've managed like a hundred and three units. Um in a few years. And what should be happening is we should be creating partnerships with. Uh developers who actually do low cost housing. Um what the what the developers who are doing luxury want to build low cost housing is city money. And while I believe we should be investing some city money in those processes, we shouldn't be giving it to those developers. What we should be doing is telling those developers, okay, um we're gonna take a percentage of your building. And you don't have to, you don't have to build it. We'll get these folks over here to build this percentage, which is the low cost housing. To design and create that element. Um and we'll help them with uh city money with some uh how uh. Uh P H A money, C M N P H A money um to help actually uh produce. The kinds of housing that we need in each of these buildings. That would then uh take some of the money. They would essentially give the developers that are developing the money that they're asking for, so it's less of a cost. Less cost is almost the same thing as more uh more money outside. Um then what would end up happening is you'd share some of the payout uh when they sell the building. To um to the uh low cost developer. And you end up incentivizing, you end up giving a huge cash flow increase to the uh low cost developer. The main developer still gets the margin that they were uh looking for in the beginning. And you end up with the kinds of percentages of housing that could actually help. Those are the kinds of ways that you can accomplish that. So an incentive will will do it. If you create a demand that's too high. The developers just walk away out of course, which isn't always a bad thing, but the point is. Um what you want to be able to do is create incentives around the process, so you create win wins all around. And when that happens, the development keeps going and you start seeing the actual um housing that you want to see in the process.
Let's talk about rent control. You mentioned uh, let me see what what you've got on your website here about rent control. Kind of the kind the kind of rent control that were, this is a quote from your website, that works for renters without spooking landlords to preemptively raise rents. I I realize now that was biographical about spooking landlords to preemptively raise rents. So how would you design a rent uh rent control policy in Minneapolis to uh keep keep rents low and not spook the landlords?
So the basic elements uh of that are get the ideas. We've got at least two major ideas that are uh coming forward right now. I believe um three and seven are the ones that are being.
Five and seven, that's not important. The numbers don't matter.
So that's the element is this. If you take the ideas that are currently on board. And you have real conversations with the renters that need the help. And the well, the renters that need the help, the folks that are going to be renters, like um folks that are uh trying to downsize out of their housing. Um and uh the student bodies who are going to be uh engaging in a lot of these rents around this area. Um and you have different conversations for uh different areas, obviously. But then you start talking to the landlords and find out what their uh circumstances are and what their needs are in terms of. Um these processes, not not keeping up with the Joneses like we're seeing, but more along the lines of what is actually keeping up with. Uh the necessities of their business. And then you find the thing that serves the most uh that serves the most renters. And serves the city in its uh in its goals best. You find that middle ground. Uh that serves best through all of the uh all of the arguments that are uh involved. It's not an easy process. It's lengthy and it's um it's the kind of conversations you have to develop through. Um if you're if you're in the city, you utilize the neighborhood and community relations department. Um so that you can have um these kinds of conversations, not just with um the folks that are already speaking your language, literally and figuratively. But um also with the folks that aren't usually part of the conversation. Um so that you can make sure that all of the all of the parties that are involved are um are. Are served by the by the result in the conversation.
We're gonna we're gonna upset upset some people, Marcus. People are gonna be upset. We can't keep everyone happy. How are you? How are you not gonna spook the landlords?
I I'd say here's the thing. It's not about not spooking the landlords at all. It's about not spooking the landlords to the point where they start pricing people out of their homes. That's the issue. So I don't I don't have an issue with uh creating something that the landlords don't like. I have an issue with creating something to where the landlords feel that in order to keep up, in order to compete in the business. They have to jack up rents to the point where people who aren't um currently in a better situation, like myself. Um now have to leave. So it's it's important to make sure um that they're not completely spooked. Out of the out of the conversation. I'm not I'm not trying to not ruffle any feathers. We've got to make some changes. Don't misunderstand me. But there's a limit to how far you can go before you hurt people you never intended to. And that has to be part of the conversation. That has to be something that you're looking to make sure you don't do. Um as you e-engage in the process.
Is there a part of a rent control policy that you think is just a necessity, whether it doesn't have to necessarily be the percentage? And to correct myself earlier, you were right. It is three and seven percent. I was I thought you were talking about the framework uh number, so. So you have any specific uh policy ideas that are like the policy has to have that, maybe rent banking? So landlords uh can can not raise the rent this year, but hold hold on to that possibility for increasing it later. If the tenant moves out or something.
And that that is one of the things that I think is uh actually useful. Uh like I said, with my own situation, um because I've been here a long time and because I'm a decently good tenant. Um they didn't need to raise the rents on me, but the rents have raised around me as people move out, because this is an area with a lot of turnover, like I said. Um a lot of students rent in this building and areas around. Uh that creates a lot of natural turnover in this area. Now that that's this area. Not everywhere has a major university just sitting right in the middle of town. Um so one of the things that you do is, yes, you you create situations where um a renter that is already. Extant, you know, staying in their place. Um y- you create the caps for um what you can do to somebody who's already in their uh rental uh scenario. And you um you allow certain increases. Like you said, banking can uh can be allowed in certain areas. Where you're talking about um the changes in. Overall, uh when you're talking about the changes in um overall uh rental status. So when people move out, um the ability to raise rents uh based off of overall timing might be entirely reasonable. But you keep it so that people can stay uh where they are already staying. You want to create circumstances that don't price people out of the places they're already living.
So let's talk about inclusionary zoning. You say you want to increase the percent uh required. Do you have an idea of what you want to increase the percent to? Just short answer, if you can.
So something like something like ten in the short term and moving up to twenty five when we get. Uh further and further, but I think that the way to do that is really by increasing um the incentive structures. And by decreasing the amount of by which each uh luxury developer actually has to pay. So instead of putting in city money as they would like, decreasing their overall costs. We'll we'll hand the development of our uh of our low cost housing over to uh some of the people who uh do it better. And um we'll we'll incentivize uh them directly so that when they get their payoff for the building, the the the. Non-luxury developers, um they actually end up with a great deal um to to feather their business with. So that they can continue doing what they do best, which is develop low cost housing.
The city currently incentivizes some of the inclusionary zoning. If it goes more deeply affordable, I think it's like fifty percent A M I. Twenty percent twenty percent of the units of fifty percent M I for if the developer is receiving TIF money uh to support that.
But we don't generally do TIF that often anymore. That's the problem.
So there if the developer is willing to do it, uh I think the city has been uh quite amenable to offering that TIF money. I just don't know how many of them are applying for it. But when you when you say incentivize, you're not talking about TIF money. You're talking about letting someone else develop the units?
I think that would be, I think that's one strategy. There may be a complication in the actual uh development of it. I I do realize that I don't have literally all the answers, but the I think one of the things that could work. Like say you got Aon or P P O um as one of your kind of regular go to uh secondary developers. So they they do low cost housing very well. And if you got them into a partnership with a developer. That was already um trying to develop these kinds of things such that you um set up either floors or sections. Of the building um as uh low cost housing and you turned over uh the development and construction of those units. To this secondary developer. You take some of the cost off of the primary developer, which is essentially giving them money. Um and you you give some of the capability to the uh secondary developer. To develop and build those units at low cost rates. Um as long as they're working together to make sure that everything works. Um you don't want to create, you know, structural issues or any of those uh problems, but as long as the the elements work. What you end up with is low cost housing in several areas at at higher rates than would have been. And then you're selling the building with the full understanding. They'll sell the building, which is what developers generally do. They'll sell the building um with all the understood and caveats that are involved in the building. And when it sells, a portion of the sale will go to the secondary developer, according to what they what they developed. So they'll get a piece of the pie. They get some support uh from city money. And so you end up giving. Um the developers that do the kind of development that we want to see more of, more money. Um and thus they can feather their nests to to put reliably in their pockets. The capability to do more and more housing, which is usually the limit that we're dealing with. It's that the luxury developers have all the money. And thus keep developing more and more housing, whereas the low cost developers only have so much because they're. Uh they're building with an eye on creating low cost housing and it cuts into the potentials of profit that they have. If we were incentivizing the low cost housing developers uh to have not just better uh better profits on their own circumstance. But better um better perspectives for what they could achieve. We'd be actually developing an engine to create more low cost housing, but that's not how we operate yet.
Well, let's do a gotcha question.
Go ahead.
So you have a photo of a Russian uh politician? I don't know what this guy's name is, but I actually Googled the image. On your website, there's a photo of a Russian politician. You must have uh put it up there as a stock image. What's going on with that?
Uh which page?
I think it's the homepage. It's near the uh join our campaign, get involved, the get involved button. Right above that, there's a photo of a Russian politician with a group of people. There's like Russian maps in the background. It's very nefarious seeming and people are on edge about Russia these days, so I'm wondering if you have an answer for how that photo ended up there.
You mean the so join our campaign on the left hand side?
Yeah, yeah, right right above the get involved button. That is a Russian uh politician right there.
Okay, um I I was unaware that it was a Russian politician. I assumed it was a stock image. Um this is uh my uh. My uh photo team, sorry, my uh media team uh put this one together. I'm assuming they didn't know. Do you know who the politician is?
I I can find that information for you. Uh I did I did like a reverse image search. I forget who it is, though. I could email it to you later. It's not a big deal.
Well, I mean, here's the thing. I mean, I don't I don't know. I I don't know the situation and I don't know who the politician is. But I'll say this, you know, if it's Alexei Navalny, I don't have terribly much of a problem with it. If it's a Putin ally, I would have a problem with it. There are, you know.
So I looked up his politics and it's a weird, it's a weird. Okay, go ahead. It's just a weird mix of nationalist. It's a weird mixture of like nationalism and uh it's got some complicated views. Uh you would not be proud of him. Uh I don't remember his name.
Okay, so I mean, I like I said, I don't know who it is, but like my point more than anything else is just because somebody is Russian. Doesn't mean that I would disagree with everything that they have to say. But my my point is there are people in every, there are people in every country that are fighting for the betterment of uh their circumstances. And probably everybody. So just because somebody is Russian isn't going to be a reason that I would uh disavow them. But I will admit, I do not know who this uh politician is. The uh picture is the back of their head, so I don't I don't really have a good idea. Um and everybody else in the picture is masked. Uh so I can't tell you that even my uh my team knew that this was a Russian politician. Um I am not shamed of the idea that a Russian person might be in on my page. But the if it's the wrong kind of policy that this person has, I'll be happy to change it for uh much more of a stock image. This isn't, this isn't a thing that I, you know, put up to promote a particular individual.
It's fine, Marcus. This was just a joke, gotcha question. You used a stock, you used a stock image that you weren't aware of the source and it's fine. But uh again, he's got some weird views. You probably want would want to find a new uh new photo for that section part of your website. Okay, let's talk about transportation. In the Star Tribune, their readers write section today. Someone said the bicycle coalition, which doesn't exist anymore. It's now our streets, Minneapolis. But they said the bicycle coalition is the Minneapolis equivalent of MAGA. A noisy minority that has somehow managed to spook the bejeebers out of local politicians and department heads. So what is your opinion of uh the Minneapolis MAGA movement of bicycle uh fanatics? What is your opinion of those people?
Okay, I I think comparing them to MAGA is A A extreme and B kind of problematic. Just in the direction that they have a tendency to go, but I will say this. Um I think that creating streets that are safer for uh people walking and bicycling. I'm a general pedestrian. I don't own a car. It's not a thing that I share with a lot of the folks in Minneapolis. And I do understand why people uh want to get around in their own vehicles. I get it. But here's the thing, um one of the things that we're trying to do for energy and environment is decrease uh overall emissions. And one of the things that some of these groups are actually very good at doing is creating circumstances. That make it easier, better, more convenient, and sometimes even more fun. Um for folks to be able to get around and and do their leisure activities on bikes and walking. Um they are very strong in Minneapolis, much like in Seattle, um because that's an activity that a lot of people like to do. We have a great urban canopy and we have some great parks around the area. And people getting around not in a car is something that's very popular. And because of that, they have a lot of strength. They have numbers. And it's a lot of people with some money, so they also have some individuals who want to. Uh um who who politicians want to listen to. That's where the strength comes from. Now, do I believe that they should be listened to on literally every circumstance? No. Um there are good ideas and there are not so great ideas, but here's the thing. I think that the general direction that they're trying to go is a better one. I mean, I think that we should probably, I think we should probably have, you know, kind of. Green uh green gardens instead of alleys, you know, the what the. you know, kind of green uh, green gardens instead of alleys, you know, the, what the space between our houses should be green. I think that um, we should have more paths for uh, biking and walking in, in the area. Um, and I definitely believe that um, we should be trying to uh, green the territory, increase the urban canopy that actually makes it uh, more comfortable for uh, people to walk um, around the, around the city, especially in uh, neighborhoods where that has been neglected, like in uh, North Minneapolis and uh, some other territories like Longfellow, where the urban canopy isn't as thick. But I think that we should be increasing those kinds of things. And out, while we're at it, uh, increase some uh, fruiting plants, especially in those areas so that we can do a little bit to curb um, degrees of hunger that we're uh, dealing with around town. But yeah, do I believe that uh, that particular group or, and groups like them are perfect? No. Do I believe that they have the good, a good idea under most circumstances? Yeah. I think they can be quite useful in trying to achieve many of the goals that we're after. Uh, do I think they're, they should be all-powerful in terms of uh, who our politicians are listening to? No. No one should be all-powerful under those circumstances. But I, I have a tendency to agree with a lot of the things that they're after.
Marcus, Marcus, uh, did, did you realize I was asking that question sarcastically? That I don't think that the Minneapolis, I have a bike on my hat, by the way.
Yeah, I noticed.
Yeah, okay. So.
I was, I was answering clearly. I mean.
Yeah. So I, I just felt like you were maybe thought I was uh, being serious because I have, no one can tell what I, what I, my emotions at any, any point. No one can tell my emotional level.
Okay. I thought that the people that were making the, the MAGA statement were going a little too far. I didn't think you held there. You were literally quoting a magazine, uh, no, sorry, a Star Tribune article. So I.
I was just worried. I get worried. I get worried sometimes. I get worried.
Sorry about that.
It felt like the longer you went on with the answer, you were like, well, uh, you know, the, we shouldn't listen to them all the time, but they are also, I agree with them. It just felt like you were hedging so much when you should have just been pandering to me. But I, I realize other people will be listening to this.
Yeah, no problem. Here's the thing. It's just, I, I have a ten, I'm, I'm a person that doesn't like absolutes. So I, I generally state things that I think are true, which is usually, you know, more like even somebody I agree with almost entirely, I'm usually like ninety, ten. Cause there's probably gonna, they're probably gonna come up with something that I don't agree with and that I don't think will be useful. And so I have to, I have to mention that point. Sorry. It's a thing I do. I apologize.
No, I, I apologize for creating this awkward moment between the two of us. So on your, here's an interesting thing I found on your website. Uh, you mentioned the school of thought known as Infinite Games. Uh, as opposed to like games where there are winners and losers and you, so. Uh, are there games like this? What, what is an example of a kind of game that's like uh, using that school of thought?
Well, I mean, I, I like Dungeons and Dragons. I, I play Dungeons and Dragons. Yeah. The point of that game is to keep playing.
Right. Are there really, are there really no winners and losers?
Not really. Your dungeon master is the person creating the world for you to operate in. Losing would be impossible. It's literally the role they play. And the players generally are, you know, they're trying to uh, achieve both um, internal cohesion with the team um, and uh, you know, defeating various enemies that do not have a representation in the, in the wider world. So.
Can you die?
Yeah, the characters can, but like.
That's losing, that's losing.
Not necessarily. If you go out, if you go out in a blaze of glory, that can be better than continuing on. Um, there's lots of things, it's a narrative game. And a lot of times, it's really about how the performance actually uh, puts forward. A lot of people are trying to, uh, you know, go out in a cool way or maybe save their friends or something like that. If, if that's, if that's what you choose to do, you win. If you, especially if you achieve it, you're still winning. And you, you can create another character and go on with the process. It's, it's, it's going by choice.
There's an element of this that is similar to video games. Like you lose, well, you just, you had a good time and also you can, you can start over. And like from where you left off.
Hmm. I mean, yeah, there's an element of it that's like video games. Don't get me wrong. Um, the thing is, I, I, at this point, there is definitely nothing that quite um, comes up to the quality of the, of, of the game in terms of what it can actually do for you. The, the narrative quality and the camaraderie that comes out of um, games like this and infinite games um, is a benefit that I think most people, you know, just don't have the experience of, but it's getting more popular day by day.
So I wanna, I wanna tease out the metaphor, cause it's in the bio section on your website. The metaphor you make with infinite games and politics and me cynic that I am, I'm thinking, come on. Uh, politics is totally winners and losers, like using, using bike lanes and street redesigns, for example. Like what, if you're a fanatic about parking, I, I call it the Minneapolis Culture War, where it's like the bike haters and people who just like, don't you take my parking. I won't have it. Not for a bus lane, not for a bike lane, not to make a street crossing shorter. Uh, those people are gonna feel like they, they have lost. They were gonna feel that very deeply in their heart that they have been crushed, they've been driven from the city, they don't wanna see it. So I'm wondering if you can tease out the metaphor for like infinite games, if you were trying to make this metaphor. I don't know if I was reading something into it that, that you didn't intend, but like, how does that work as applied to city politics?
So what you, what you search for are win-wins. What you look for are the kinds of ways in which you can um, help literally everybody involved. I'm not saying everything can be done that way, and that's in there too. But like, to give you an example, one of the best things that is possible um, from, from one of my platform elements is inclusive financing. So inclusive financing is a quick way to get energy, uh, uh, energy efficiency improvements and clean energy um, uh, improvements on uh, in housing um, as quickly as possible. Okay. One of the ways that it works is it allows you to pay it off over time instead of paying it off right up front. And it turns out that they're always, um, almost always, um, lower cost than the savings that you end up getting. So if you're paying month by month, all that happens is your bill goes down a tiny bit. So you use those kinds of programs. Now, first of all, in inclusive financing itself, everybody wins. The um, the, the, it doesn't cost the city anything. It doesn't cost the utilities really anything. Um, you're paying it off on your bill. The folks uh, that made it get paid and your bill goes down. Win-win. Nobody's hurt. So you take that process and you start applying it in bigger and better places. NPHA, I mentioned this before. NPHA's current budget is eclipsed by the amount of um, of, amount of energy efficiency retrofits and um, uh, ways they need to bring things up to code, weatherization and energy efficiency retrofits. It, the cost of the existing housing to bring it up to code is greater than the uh, is, is, is actually greater than their budget, their annual budget. So you use inclusive financing so that they can pay a lot of this off over time. It frees up almost all of that budget. And then you can use that for low-cost housing. Another win-win. How about um, developing, uh, how about, sorry, not developing. How about buying electric buses for transportation? If you bought them under an inclusive financing program, you could get the buses changed over quickly, decrease all the emissions you would get on stepping it down slowly over time and pay it off slowly over time and still be operating. Um, so I mean, those are just three examples of uh, housing, uh, electric buses and uh, energy and environment circumstances that would be helped by that kind of circumstance. And those are all win-win scenarios. So I mean, when you're looking for a way in which to achieve for multiple parties involved and create uh, situations where the situation just gets better, there are solutions. Be looking for them is my point. Be looking for them, um, serve them if you, if you can. Um, rather than just assume they don't exist and, you know, move forward with that idea. It's like, if there, if the opportunity presents itself, um, uh, go for it. The other element of it is you gotta be looking for it. I happen to, it, much of my work exists on the intersections between various um, between various issues. And so I happen to be um, looking in a lot of those places for solutions. And thankfully, sometimes I find them.
Is there, this is a short answer question, Mark, Marcus, cause we're like an hour into this. Uh, what committee, what committee would you wanna serve on or committees?
Yep. Definitely, I wanna serve on the uh, Clean Energy Partnership and the Energy and Environment Committee, whatever name uh, that will be holding uh, at the time. It's been the Peace Committee. It's been a couple of things several times. Um, I definitely wanna be there and I definitely wanna be on the Intergovernmental Relations Committee because some of the work that they do with the county, uh, the state, uh, can achieve great things like shutting down the Herc incinerator, which I think is uh, closely on the horizon, setting up zero waste uh, uh, programs. I think those are some great things that could be uh, happening. Um, so I definitely wanna be uh, on those two committees just to start with. So I'll, I'll give you the option to move on to something else.
Okay, we're, we're at the end. Usually when I get an hour into it with people, which is sadly always, it takes an hour. They seem exhausted. They seem like they're going to die. You see, you seem like you could go on for two hours.
I love a good conversation.
Your energy level at the beginning and the end, uh, I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to tell the difference when I edit this episode. Your energy levels stayed at the same level. So here's a question I ask at the end of the episode to everyone. It's about what they would recommend. Uh, what's making you happy? What do you enjoy that you think, aside from Dungeons and Dragons? We've covered that.
That would've been too easy.
You, you can do, you can go further into that if you want, but what, what do you enjoy? It could be like a book, a walk in the park, a game, something you like that other people should take up.
I, I really love walking. So uh, it's one of the reasons why I don't uh, I don't have a car. I can just walk around the city and really enjoy it. It's a great form of exercise. And this city has some amazingly beautiful places in it. Um, you know, I happen to live right near the river and um, some of the, some of the elements right on Main Street. Uh, the park right across the street from Main Street and Father Anupen Bluffs Park. I mean, these are just some beautiful places. There's a, there's a walkover bridge into downtown, um, just uh, just off of Sixth Street. I mean, just, just as a continuation of Sixth Avenue uh, here. And it's, it's just a beautiful set of walks. So I mean, this is one of the things that I enjoy. Walking around campus is always fun. Um, so it's a great way to kind of, you know, settle your emotions. It's a great way to kind of get some focus in and see some beautiful sights. Uh, the, the only difficulty I have with winter is that it's hard to walk in the same way. But yeah.
We should've talked about that. We should've talked about how, how we fix that. Are you, do you support municipal, keep this short, please, Marcus?
Yeah.
Do you support municipal sidewalk clearing?
Yes, absolutely. We should definitely be doing a lot more of that.
And now I'm tempted to ask a bunch of follow-ups, but we're done. We're, we're done. Marcus Mills is running for city council in Ward Three against the dreaded uh, Michael Rainville. Michael Rainville, if you're listening, please, you, you can come here and be uh, in the hot seat here. We can have fun. Uh, it's been the Wedge Life Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.